All right, good evening. It is 6:00 PM, Tuesday, October 22nd. City Council meeting. I'd like to call the meeting to order and acknowledge that the press and public were duly notified of the meeting in accordance with the Freedom of Information Act. Join me if you can for the invocation, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance. Father, we thank you for the day and just thank you for the beauty of it and the awesome weather we've had the last few weeks. Just pray that you will guide conversations and discussions and decisions that are made here tonight as we do the business of the city. Thank you for all you do, in your name I pray. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Nicole, roll call.
Councilmember Pierce.
Here.
Councilmember Anderson.
Here.
Councilmember Ward.
Here.
Councilmember Fregoso.
Here.
Councilmember Myers.
Here.
Councilmember Hahn.
Here.
Councilmember Carroll.
Here.
Mayor Pounds.
Here.
You have a quorum?
Thank you. First item is citizens' comments.
Mary Alice Monroe. Yes, ma'am.
Hello.
Hi. Whatever comments you'd like to make about...
Oh, I thought I was going to be asked questions. This is lovely. Um, first of all, thank you for having me. I'm very delighted. This will be our 20th anniversary of the Wild Dunes Authoring Event, so it's a very big year for us. And I spoke to the ATACS Committee, and this year we asked for what we did last year for the January event, which is the crown jewel of the year. It's in January, Martin Luther King Weekend every year, and we anticipate the usual 500 people sold out. In addition, this last year, we started a seasonal because of the popularity of the event. And Wild, not just Wild Dunes, but Isle of Palms has really become a literary spot on the market for all authors as well as publishers now. I'm very proud of that. And the seasonal events, spring, summer, and fall, were added at the request of authors wanting to come here to our island to speak and draw people in. So we started it at a smaller level, and it's, the demand is growing, so I requested the support for ATACS to bring a smaller amount, but nonetheless, just to help this get off the ground. The ticket prices are such now that I think we're maxed out at what we can ask, and we need the support if we're going to be able to do the seasonal, which is why we requested it for the spring, summer, fall. And what's nice is the summer is primarily children, which is a children's event, which is the only one we do all year, and the other two are for adults. So I'm here to answer any questions you might have. As I said, I kept the January event request the same as last year, and thank you very much for it. And I spoke, and I have to say a couple of things that we did last year as a result. We did our first off-campus event, and we had it at Islander 71, which was a huge success. It was free to anyone. No one had to buy a ticket to the event. They just could come, and we introduced local authors, and it was a huge success. A couple hundred people came, max, filled up the restaurant, and we would like to continue that again this year for Isle of Palms. And we're encouraging, I spoke to the Chamber of Commerce, to ask them to invite the guests with either coupons or events, so we could bring people out onto the island more for each of our events, because people are increasingly flying in for the event, and 34% come in from out of town. And that's all that we know of. I suspect more come in than we are actually recording. We're trying to improve our methods. So if you have any other questions, please, I'd be delighted to answer.
Mary Alice will vote on this in a moment, but any questions while she's here?
The only question I had last time was, it's a nonprofit.
It is a nonprofit.
And any proceeds that you gain from it go to charity?
Yes, every year we announce the charity, and this year again it will be Reading Partners. Thank you. Yes, it's all, we, at your suggestion and insistence, we actually became a nonprofit. Until then, we were just losing money. But thank you.
Thank you, Mary Alice. Appreciate you doing this for our island.
Josh Hooser.
I've been talking to so many people, my voice is about force right now, so I apologize. I live at 6 Sandwich Lane in Wild Dunes, and I'm here to express my strong support for the Waterway Boulevard Multi-Use Path Elevation Project, particularly the proposal to raise the elevation from six feet to seven feet above sea level. May seem like a small change, but it's a crucial step in protecting our island. We've seen firsthand how vulnerable our island can be. Just last December, the nor'easter brought water levels up to 6.72 feet, and it's clear we must be proactive and not reactive when it comes to flood management. The elevation increase isn't just an investment in infrastructure, it's an investment in our community's safety and resilience. I spoke with many residents. I understand there's been some confusion about the project's scope, specifically whether the biking and walking path in front of the homes along Waterway would be separate from the drainage improvements. I want to emphasize that combining the benefits outside of our community. It's not just convenience, it's about maximizing the impact of our resources to create long-lasting benefits for our residents. I recognize that reaching to seven feet comes with an additional taxpayer expense, and I understand that every dollar matters, but this is precisely the kind of project that warrants such investment. The benefits are clear. Streets like Forest Trail, Shady Lane, and the avenues between 21st and 41st will see a dramatic improvement in flood prevention, protecting homes and livelihoods, and making our island more resilient for future generations. I also want to extend my gratitude to Wild Dunes for their partnership. By allowing access during their golf course renovations, they provided us with the unique opportunity to carry out this critical work efficiently. It's a great example of what we can achieve when our city and our local partners come together for the common good. I spoke with staff like Douglas Kerr, and it's clear that Wild Dunes has been a tremendous ally in this effort, so thank you for your collaboration. Tonight, I look forward to hearing more about this project during the presentation. When the time comes for a vote, I hope you'll join me in supporting this plan that prioritizes the safety, well-being, and future of our island, because together we can ensure that Isle of Palms remains not just a beautiful place, but a safe and secure one for all of us. Thank you all so much, and I made it through it.
Susan Smith.
I also wholly support the Waterway Boulevard project, which actually was something that I think I was one of the first voices to ask for about seven or eight years ago. But really, what I'm here today for is because I want to thank our city administrator, Desiree Fregoso, who has served the city of Isle of Palms for more than a decade now and is in her seventh year as city administrator. And I don't think I'm breaking any news here to say that Desiree has just recently shared with the city's council and committees that she's leaving her role to go to work with the Municipal Association of South Carolina, and that's quite a loss for our city. I remember when the city administrator position became open at the start of my first term on city council in 2018, and Desiree was the Assistant City Administrator, and it was obviously logical for her to step into that role as an interim, but she was still somewhat early in her time with the city and in her career. But she showed up in a big way with an incredible work ethic, intelligence, commitment to her community, and to civil service. And her role is by no means an easy one. She answers to nine members of city council, who we all know don't always agree, as well as the whole community, and leads a staff of more than 100. So, but she shaped this community in many positive lasting ways, and I want to be among the first to thank her for all the many good things she's done for our island. Thank you.
Thank you, Susan.
That's all. Yes, sir.
Thank you. Thank you all. Next item is approval of previous meeting's minutes. We've got the regular city council meeting on September 24th, special city council workshop on October 8th, and then the committee meetings are attached. Is there a motion?
Motion to approve.
Second, any edits or changes to the council meeting minutes? Those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. Next item is special presentations. First is presentation from Dominion Energy of Palmetto Removal Project. You will recall, earlier this year, they completed the tree trimming project. In this phase two, that was always kind of the plan, to come back and do that. They've completed Sullivan's, now they're ready for IOP. So with us tonight is Paul Fisher and Elizabeth Jablonsky. Elizabeth, are you going to take it?
I'm going to take it.
Two months into your Dominion tenure? Awesome. Bring it on.
For your rules.
Hardest question I could come up with, I got.
Hi, everyone. I'm Elizabeth Jablonsky. I'm here with Dominion Energy, along with Paul, who's in the back of the room, and we're going to just talk briefly about the upcoming removal of some of the palm trees on the island. So our arborists had sent me a couple of bullets to share with you all. I'm going to read those to you, okay? So I will start by saying that due to the proximity of overhead power lines, Dominion Energy foresters have identified palmetto trees during a recent inspection that require removal. You may have seen some of them marked with some red spray paint. These palmetto trees require immediate removal and have been marked at their base with that red dot, and they will be removed by our contractor. A total of 292 palmetto trees have been marked with red paint, which require immediate removal, and that is scheduled to begin November 11th. These trees are considered a Category 1 removal, and I'll tell you what the categories are after this. Notifications will be mailed and emailed on October 24th, I believe that's this Thursday, those are going to start to go out, to customers that have a Category 1 removal at or near their property. This notification will include a contact number and a link to the Dominion Energy Tree Trimming webpage for those who may have additional questions, and going to that link is the best way to get ahold of us for that. In addition to the 292 that are currently marked, there is a additional 161 trees that have been identified as a Category 2, and 84 that have been identified as a Category 3, and will require removal at a future date. As they grow into a Category 1 tree or Category 1 clearance, these trees will be cleared. They have not been marked yet, so that date is TBD because they haven't, they haven't reached a Category 1 level yet. Like I said, notifications will be mailed out to customers on this upcoming Thursday that have a Category 1 removal at or near their property. The notification will include the contact number and link. Category 1 palm trees will be cut flush to the ground and all debris will be hauled off the property. And like I said, work is expected to begin November 11th, and it will take several months to remove all the Category 1 trees. So I'll share with you, there's a Category 1, a Category 2, and a Category 3. Like I stated, we're starting with the Category 1 removals on November 11th. The trees identified as a Category 2 or 3 will be removed as soon as they start to look like a Category 1 or are a Category 1. Category 1, at the time of inspection, these are palmetto trees in the safeguard zone. A Cat 1 tree, palmetto tree is adjacent to, above, or within five feet of primary wire. It also includes palmetto trees that block access to facilities. A Category 2, at the time of inspection, these are palmetto trees in the safeguard zone and have more than five feet of clearance from the primary, so they're not a concern just yet. And Category 3, at the time of inspection, these are palmetto trees in safeguard zone and are below the neutral, so they are not a concern at all really at this point in time. I believe the spreadsheet from our arborist and everything has been included in the agenda? Do you have all that? Okay. Okay, well, that was it.
And Desiree, I know staff has met with Dominion already, and you know, we're undergrounding at 14th Avenue.
14th, yes.
So those, there's seven or eight that I guess will come off the list that you don't need to remove.
Yes, Desiree emailed us about that today. Our team is actually checking that, so right now we have them put on like the very last until we get an update on what the timeline is from them. But yes, our team's working on that right now. Yep.
John.
Just to clarify, on a, a Category 1 is with five feet within a primary line?
Within five feet of a primary wire, yes.
And if a homeowner would have a question about whether their tree was in that five, they can, they could call the Dominion?
Yep, absolutely. Yeah. And they could submit a request through there.
I have...
Jan, go ahead.
That's quite a number of trees.
It is.
On our island. Do you have any kind of a program to, I know you have to remove them because they interfere with the power lines, but what about replacing them in a, in a location that is nearby but will not interfere with the power lines?
As of right now, we do not have a program to replace the trees. No.
Okay. So you're going to basically take away, was it three, five, 500-plus palmetto trees off our island?
Yes, correct, yep.
Yeah, 350-ish now.
Correct. 292 now.
292 now, and then when they come in for their next cycle, five years from now, we'll review those that are in the Category 2 or 3.
And that just means they get tall enough where they're interfering with the power lines, so they're all...
Yeah, we're just going for Category 1 now, the ones that are the most needed to be removed, and then at a later date in time, it would be 2 and/or 3. The ones that are currently identified as a Category 2 or 3.
I would suggest that Dominion consider some sort, I know you can't relocate those trees, it's just as expensive to replace them as to relocate them, but I would suggest that you consider a replacement, a replacement program of some sort in the future, because this is not very nice to our community.
It's a lot, it is a lot of trees.
Other questions? Desiree, anything? All right, Elizabeth, thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
Yep. Next item is update of community enrichment plan. David McNair is with us. David is an external consultant, has been leading this process for quite a number of months. Thank you for being here tonight. Tonight's really a high-level overview. We'll be expecting the full-blown report. You'll recall, this is a resident, the task force that we've had together for eight months, nine months, somewhere in there. All those recommendations will eventually come to council, just like any other board and commission that we have that's made up of residents. Hopefully, first quarter of next year, we'll have the full report. So David, thank you for the efforts to date and being here tonight.
Thank you. That's pretty much the report. We will see you in early next year. I don't know if you've ever worked on a passion project, and you kind of put your head down and you just go to work, and then you look up and look at the time and you go, oh, my gosh, I feel like I'm late. But that's sort of what's happened here, and we realized it has been since January when we kicked this off with the city council, and we thought it was high time to give you an update as to what's happened there, and the process that we followed and kind of where we are in that. So just quick reminder, this is not for readability, just to remind you, we started in the fall of last year with a community-wide survey, about 750 responders to the survey, and that was a quantitative survey to set the table for us, to give us a starting point of where we go. We had very good response to the survey, and what it said at a top line was almost 80% of the islanders were saying, we have a superb, a very nice quality of life on the island, but it was the 20% that said, you know, it's a nice quality, but it's declining, and I'm concerned, that really fuels the work that this task force has been doing. So we finalized the advisory task force within 30 days of last meeting with you in January, and they started to work immediately in early March with the work. We targeted about eight to 10 members on the task force. We ended with a dozen. We asked for, these slides were from January, we wanted engaged, informed people with proven contributions to the island, and I would say we got that in spades. I do want to pass along the gratitude and the accolades to the task force members, and when you see the extent of their work, I hope you join me in that. They have been very engaged. Good mix of business interests and residential interests. So as we began in March, here's a little bit of a recap. We first reviewed all of the quantitative survey results to make sure that we were gleaning from that the proper priorities that would come into the enrichment plan. We then conducted two island-listening forums, one in late May and early June, so that we could hear the stories behind them, and basically gut-check. Were these priority areas the right ones, and what was the flavor of things we needed to know behind them? So that was extremely helpful to have. We've had 13 task force meetings as of the end of this week, with numerous subgroup meetings in between. I did a rough calculation, and without surveying each of the task force members and actually asking them, how many hours do you think, have you been tracking and logging? But we're somewhere over 1,000 hours into the process, and I say that from a standpoint to their commitment, their use of data to drive decision-making, their editing and writing and so forth. They've just, they've been a tremendous group to work with. We, through the process, check everything with city staff as well, and I want to pass along the same gratitude to the city staff, to look at these, to say, one, are we giving recommendations in line with how the city functions? Are they duplicative? Have they already been considered? How can we stay informed of what may belong in the plan and what we may want to adjust in the plan? So that draft plan is in process right now. We have four major category areas, and I'll address those on the next slide. There are 10 goals behind those four areas, and 45 priorities that have been identified. Within those priorities, due to the extent of look that the task force has done, there's over 170 specific recommendations in the plan. Our goal is to deliver something to you in January that is something that's easy to digest, to understand the priorities, and the recommendations are really to be used to feed the existing groups that are looking at these areas right now, to provide a more data, more information, and a perspective from island residents as to how they feel about these things. So here are the four areas. We have seasonal parking and traffic, and we all know that Rose is number one in the initial survey. It has gotten an awful lot of attention and some great recommendations and considerations behind that. Environmental is the next. Safety, looking at beach, pedestrian, vehicular, is all under the safety with a number of recommendations. Even though people see today it's an extremely safe island, there are still things to preserve going forward that deserve a little bit of attention. And then lastly, we have a quality of life area, which is recreational, social balance of residents, rentals, businesses, making sure that we're keeping the island to the vision that has been outlined in the strategic plan. The other thing I would share is, we are wanting to align this as much as possible with your existing strategic plan, both in structure, so that it's easy to pocket where these recommendations fit in line with your existing strategic plan, and I think that's been done extremely well. You have six priority areas in your strategic plan, and every one of those is being touched in some way by the recommendations of the task force. So we're being very mindful of the existing committee structures that take place for implementation, and basically, we are going to continue the draft refinement between now and pre-November. We would like this to be a living document that lives on the website, and in early 2025, we would like to submit it to council for your review. I would say we're contemplating, if open to it, that it might be best to do that in a workshop format, because to digest the extent of the impact of what is suggested in the enrichment plan is quite large, and so we thought that may be a good format to do it in, but that certainly can be worked out as we have to do. So with that in mind, we have almost half of the task force members present tonight. I wouldn't embarrass them by calling them out, but just to say, the recognition of what they have given towards this process far exceeded most groups that I work with, and what they've done on a volunteer basis with, I would say, care, compassion, respect, and data. So it's been just a really good process. So any questions from the councilmembers? I can't wait for you to enjoy, I have to be reading.
Looking forward to the report.
Yeah, David, thank you, and I know most of the members are here tonight, and thank you all. You've heard it from me a number of times, but very much appreciate it, probably more than any of you signed up for, but thank you for that. And David, thank you for your efforts. Very appreciative. Next is the Waterway Boulevard Multi-Use Path Elevation Project discussion regarding benefits of increasing the level of protection from six to seven feet. Rick from Thomason Hutton is here with us. Just a quick side story on Rick. Desiree and Chief and I were, I guess Debbie Storm had come through, and we had just finished the 41st Avenue Drainage Project, and turning down 41st Avenue, I think Desiree and I, both eyes were shut, just wondering what the heck we were getting ready to see. We get down, we're putting on our slickers, and we come out, and there's a guy standing on the grate on the 41st Avenue, seeing how water's flowing, seeing how things doing. It was Rick. That's a good partner, pal. Thank you very much for y'all's efforts and what you do for the city. Thanks for joining us again tonight.
You're welcome. Thank you. So an update to the council on where we stand on the project, just trying to give everybody a little bit of background, make sure...
Raise your mic, please, if you don't mind. Thank you, Eric.
All right, just to bring everybody up to speed to where we are in the process, we began this project probably two years ago, looking at what we thought we could get for protection, and we had come out with the easier recommendation that we could go to a protection level of six feet on a datum that is, got all these numbers on it and stuff, but it's, it's six feet, which is roughly a little bit above where the pathway is now in places. So we were going to put it up, seal it real good. And so, next slide, this is an inundation of the back of the island that shows how far a six-foot tide would come onto the island, and then the, the next one on that, oh, can I click it? That's the, yeah. And so, again, shows it getting relieved, I guess you could just, and then the third one, and then the areas. And then, after we got done with this study and we were starting to move into design, we had what was called Hurricane, was it Debbie?
The Nor'easter.
The Nor'easter, yeah, from December 2023.
23.
2023. And that happened, and that came in and flooded the back of the island to an elevation of, on our datum, 6.72, if you're really being exact. So that would have exceeded our recommended design. So that, of course, concerned everybody, but again, it's a, it's a rare event in that. So the, the next page, so just again, to kind of show everybody, these are a series of tides, and it's not all coming in for some reason. Anyway, the 6.7-foot tide came in, Doug and the staff challenged us to, what could we, could we get to seven, to predict against as high a tide as that? So we went back to the drawing board a little bit. We also knew at the same time that Wild Dunes is going to be redoing their golf course. We fortunately have the, the opportunity, and we are working with them on their golf course revitalization, and they're not redoing it, they're revitalizing it. And so we kind of knew their plans, and knowing that, we approached them to say, hey, can we place some of the potential flood mitigation measures on your course? And, you know, we won't mess up the golf, we'll use the path or some, some just areas that aren't in play, and we'll just do burns and things like that, and they said, yeah, but we'll, we'll see. So go to the next file, not the, not the page, no, just the next file, please. So that is a lot, so you see, that's a lot more inundation. That is the seven-foot tide inundation. So this is slightly worse than what happened on the December 2023. So a lot of flooding, a lot more flooding, a lot more buildings, garages, cars are affected with that type of storm. And then the next, the next one. So we, we looked at doing some protection on the golf course, and so that moved, and that also includes almost every house that's along the pathway, except for several houses that, beginning at right here, like 27th, 28th Avenue this way. These houses still remain on the outside, but most of them are outside of the inundation. And then the one last, one last one, if you don't...
Rick, can you, before you leave that?
Yeah, I'm sorry, yep.
Amy, keep going.
How do we read that?
So this is a representation of, all of these, the blue was what would have flooded if a seven-foot tide came in, but now that we put the project in place, all these areas don't flood in if this, if the project is built to the seven-foot elevation. And then, so to illustrate who benefits from that or what benefits from that, we identified all the houses that, you know, the water gets underneath or close to, so all the houses in yellow, all the... So all the houses in yellow, all the buildings in yellow are benefiting from the project in some form or fashion. All the lots with the yellow around them are benefiting from the project because their lots are protected from that tidal surge. So again, what we're trying to show is how much more, you know, if you go, we had this same exhibit for the six. How much more this does for the island, for the residents of the island.
So, just to repeat, at a seven-foot tide, the blue and those, and the yellow homes would benefit from the project.
Right.
Had that not been there.
Correct, yeah. If we didn't have that project, all these houses would have had some type of water close under, in, on those houses.
But that's tidal inundation.
That's correct.
I think you have to take into consideration strong water runoff or rainfall added to that. So if you don't mind clarifying.
Yeah, Katie, go ahead.
My question, from the last time, which is kind of still my question, is, this plan that we're looking at right now, using the golf course, the repairs that Wild Dunes is doing, doing it in conjunction with Wild Dunes, if we did it to six feet, not the original six-foot plan, but this plan protecting to six feet, is that not going to still protect? I mean, the way I think of this, and maybe I'm wrong, is the waters, because this is tidal inundation, so this is water that's coming from the backside. So the water's rising, and it got to that 6.7 feet at high, high tide. So it was there for 30, an hour, 30 minutes? I mean.
Couple hours.
So, because when you have a six, six-hour tide cycle, you're only at high tide for a short period of time. So if you have a protection up to six feet, while you are getting above that six feet for a certain short period of time, you're still getting protection. I mean, I understand it is going to overtop it on the, that high tide, which happens, you know, how often does it happen? I mean, I'm just trying to look at this as a, if we had, what would the difference be?
So, we went back and looked at the, what are the frequencies? So like, the frequency of going to a six-foot was, like, it had, any year had about a three to 4% chance of a tide, any given year, of that tide exceeding that six-foot elevation. So you had like a 3% chance, 3% or 4% chance. If we go to seven, we cut that down to like, less than 1%, to like, .5%, .05%. So less than 1%. So we're, and then, if you guys, and return frequency is, is a kind of a taboo now, because like, you know, we could have 100-year storm every year. But we went from a 25-year design to more than 100-year design. So we're designing to like 100 or 150-year, 200-year tide with the seven-foot tide, you know, return period. So, we probably, if we do this, if, like, the averages worked out, we wouldn't have another flood for, to this level up to 100 or 150 years from now. So it should last that long.
Yeah, but averages aren't working out.
They are not working out.
No.
But it provides a lot more protection than six does.
Yeah.
A lot more protection.
So that was kind of, so that was kind of.
You're kind of saying, and I'm sorry to interrupt you, but like, you're kind of saying, yeah, it might like, hold enough water back that the water that's making it over doesn't fill it all up to the elevation of six. You know, that may be the case. That may be the case.
And then, my real question is, what's the cost difference if we, if we did this same project to six rather than seven? That was what I was, that's what I would like to know. Or do you, do you know?
We don't, we didn't cost this at six, because it, it's just a, it's a, I mean, the original project, which protected everybody except. The houses on the Waterway Boulevard side of the path, on the Waterway side of the path. That project was, you know, 1.7 was the most recent.
Okay. So I think, I think that, I think you just answered my question, because I think that the way that I was looking at it, and some other people were looking at it, was that we went from this, basically, $1 million project that was going to protect us at six feet, to now this 1.7 million-dollar project that's giving us one more foot. But that's not, but it, it's more than that.
Yeah.
So it's not, you can't look at it as we're paying $700,000 for a foot.
For another foot.
That, that's, that's what I was wanting to get at.
The way, you know, if, you know, we had infinite budgets and stuff, we could look at the damages. You know, how many cars would be lost? How many, how many people's, you know, garages would be flooded? How many rugs have to be torn out? How many, whatever? And then we would, we would take that, and we would say, okay, well, that happens at seven, and then that happens at six, and then that's your, is the benefit that you want to be looking at, not the cost. You want to be looking at the cost, but the benefit. The benefit of going from one more foot is going to be huge.
But it is also a different plan altogether, and it does protect more property.
It does.
And it is also part of the being, we're using the golf course. So it's, it's more, that's, I guess that's what I'm just trying to wrap my head around, is that it is way more than just one foot.
That's correct. Yeah, I mean, i- if, you know, if we had, you know, the time and effort and to do the benefit-cost analysis, you would look at, what's the frequency of the floods? What's the damages? And then you make a, you know, okay, over a 100-year span of this, this project, how much damage would you prevent? And that's the benefit, and you compare it to the cost, and you want that benefit-cost to be a positive number, of course, you know, or greater than one number.
Okay.
Which, which I'm sure it is.
That makes sense now.
Okay.
Thank you.
Let me just, hey Scott, did you have a question? Sorry, were you trying to jump in?
Well, no, I was just looking at that page 44 in our packet, and I think that might answer some of Katie's questions too, because it looks like, on the cost side, that segregates it into the, I mean, there's that 1 through 34 list, which looks like the initial project. And then we've got, it looks like three or four projects on that sheet that are combined, and each one of them, you know, have a dollar value next to it. I think, you know, maybe we're going to spend a couple minutes talking through that, but, yeah, it's much more than just going from six to seven. It looks like drainage mitigation, an addition of additional swath on Waterway, and it looks like, you know, it's multiple projects that are being combined.
Yeah, the project has grown a little bit, you know, in areas that are protected up to seven. We are adding drainage to address the other problem on the island, which is not tidal inundation, but is rainfall runoff flooding, and we're trying to address some of the areas that have trapped water, particularly on, you know, what, because we're going to be tearing up Waterway Boulevard, we're going to use the opportunity to address at least four areas, maybe five areas, that have chronic flooding from just rainfall.
Jane, go ahead, sorry.
Okay. A couple more things that I wanted you to sort of talk about as well, is that, as I understand it, when you talked to us before, that going from an elevation of six foot for one project to an elevation of seven foot is not just, if we don't, if we decide to just do six feet now, we can't just add another foot of height to it for less, for $700,000 or less, it'll be double or much more than that, basically, starting from scratch all over again.
Right. And, and, you know, you have this opportunity to partner with the golf course, and that's, that's a one-time opportunity.
Okay. So there are multiple reasons to do this now. The second one was, didn't we just have another six-plus foot tide, six to seven?
Two weeks' worth, yeah. Well, that's a, that's a different datum. You're talking about tide gauge.
From the home.
Yeah, that's a tide gauge. We have not had, we've only had, there's an inundation chart, I think we've only had four tides that high since the 1940s, other than Hugo. So it's, it's a rare, it's a rare occasion.
But the, that.
Yeah, you can't just look at the high tide.
Yeah, you can't look at tide charts.
It's not the same, yeah.
All right, thank you.
You have to add pi to his numbers to get to the tide chart. So a seven equals a 10.14 on a, on a tide chart.
Okay.
For the 10-foot tide.
Okay, and just to reiterate, that we're not talking about raising the path six feet above where it is now. The path is roughly, what, slightly below six feet now?
Yeah.
Elevation?
Or as low as five.
Okay.
But some of them are pretty close to six, and some of them are above, of course.
Yeah. So, but it's just going to be a slight elevation over what there is out there now, and driveways are part of this project, so they will be incorporated properly.
Correct, and they're, and if I could go to the next PDF that's in that group, the one below, the one below it.
And that you'll make sure that there's no runoff back into homes when you raise that, correct?
Correct.
That's all part of the project.
So, one of the, one of the concerns that was brought up by council, so, we are looking at a phasing project, because there are essentially three problem areas that we can't necessarily address with the golf course work in time. There's, there's some bigger considerations, homeowners, you know, it's going to take some cooperation with some private homeowners and things like that. So that, we just can't get that, and so there's going to be three locations, which are indicated in orange here, if you can see it, that are, we are not including in the current project. So the current project is going to include the pathway improvements and then the golf course improvement. So the pathway, since we moved all the improvements onto the golf course, all the flood mitigation, most of the flood mitigation improvements onto the golf course, pathway really doesn't have to be adjusted that much. In a few places, it needs to be adjusted, but mainly it doesn't. Most of the flood mitigation work is moved to the golf course. It's really hard to see at this scale, but all these red areas, which are our construction, these, the red areas are the areas that we have to, you know, do construction work, and that's on the golf course. So we're raising the golf course pathway, not the Isle of Palm City pathway. So the pathway is really not going to change much.
Okay.
It's going to be on the golf course. Now there's.
That's their cart path you're talking about.
Correct, their cart path. We're going to use their cart path and some of their, we're going to use their cart paths and some of their, like, berm areas and, and, you know, do some landscaping to bring up that. The, the, one of the charges we had from council last time we came, we said, in this interim period, when we have this project done, and before we get those, those three holes filled in, we wanted that 6.0 protection. So there's some minor pathway work in these areas near those holes to bring that pathway up to six, because we want six. Now, we're talking, in that case, we're talking six inches, maybe. So again, we are just bringing them up slightly, just so for the several years, maybe one or two, three, four years, that we have these holes, and before we could figure it out how to work with the homeowners and the golf course to get them fixed, or, you know, plugged or sealed, everybody's protected till six. We took the opportunity to build the whole project with a plan to go to seven, and then when we get the rest of the, you know, the coordination done, we go to seven.
It's a temporary construction improvement you're talking about, the during construction, so that you make sure that you're not.
No, it'll be several years, because we have to work with homeowners, because the.
But it's part of this project. It's just a second phase of it, let's call it that or something, but.
Yes, it would be a second phase, but it, you know, this would be constructed, contractors would go away, we would continue working, and then the next contractor would come in and finish it. It might be several years, that, year or two.
And what I understand is, we need to get the section along the golf course done according to Wild Dunes timetable for their work on the golf course. So that's the priority that's set for that right now.
That's correct, because they are committed, they have started the process of killing their grass, they're going to shut that course down in March, and then they're going to start working on that course.
So in a sense, it's easier and faster for us to start there.
Correct, yeah.
It's a good priority.
Right.
As we continue to plan and design the rest of the project.
Correct. But we, yeah, but with this change order that is to be considered here, we will finish our design on everything except those three holes, is the plan. So we would have the golf course work, and the pathway would be designed, and that pathway work would, so the pathway, the Isle of Palm pathway, which is now like four or five feet wide, is going to go to eight feet wide and be nice and smooth, and in a couple places, it'll be slightly higher to, to help integrate with the overall 7.0 protection.
Okay. Now, are the, the houses that are near those holes in the project, are they going to be adversely impacted by what is being done before their work is done?
No.
Okay.
I mean, they're, they're at risk of flooding now. They'll remain to be at risk to flooding until we finish the project behind them. I mean, we're not creating more risk, we're not damming water up on them or anything like that.
All right, just.
And Thomason Hutton is involved with Wild Dunes design, so that's.
We are the engineer on that golf course. We're not the architect, there's a golf course architect, but we're the engineers on that project.
Yeah. And, just to make it clear also to the public, no Isle of Palms funds are being used to renovate the golf course, and no Wild Dunes funds are being used to elevate the Isle of Palms path. So they are parallel projects. I think they're talking, you're talking, we're talking to each other, and I think it's a very good coordination between the two. So neither one of us, we're not co-mingling funds, I guess is the best way to put it.
No.
I think it's a great opportunity, and I love that we're working together so well.
And they've been, they've been very, they've been very accommodating and very helpful, and they meet, and, you know, we've met here, we've met in the field, we're going back and forth with emails and maps and things, and so they're very, very helpful and supporter of the project.
Desiree, do you have?
Yes, just a question on behalf of council member Pierce. The Xs that are shown in the slideshow that talks about the cost and the difference in the original scope, and then the proposed scope, those Xs are reflective of those three.
Amy, can you go, I think it's the next slide.
Yeah, it's.
Of those three areas that would be faced in in the future, but would be protected at.
Last one, Amy, sorry.
Right, so when we, we did, and this estimate is several months old and was based upon, you know, lines on paper, but we looked at each one of the areas that we had to improve, and we came up with like 34 areas, and the ones that were the Xs are those, you know, troublesome areas that are going to require easements and coordination with homeowners. We had proposed a sheet wall, we might go with a different treatment, like a berm or something else, so that is going to take a little bit longer. So we took those out of the project, and so we said, what is left gets done with the pathway project. So that's, like, there's some golf course in, and there's some pathway work, but that gets done at the same time that the pathway is being done, if possible. But that, so the, those whole costs there came out of the project and allows us to look at it in greater detail and come up with a plan, and Douglas and us, Douglas has been meeting with residents and getting buy-in and things like that.
Okay. But they are, I don't like when you say it's out of this project. I want to make sure that we are going to follow up with these, these are just more complex issues as part, that we're dealing with, that we're going to address at a different, I guess the way to put it is, on a different timeframe.
But there's going to be additional costs.
Yeah.
Correct.
It's not included in this estimate.
That's correct.
It's not included in this estimate.
Not at this time.
Okay. Do we have the funding for it? Do we have enough left over from this estimate?
No.
So if I could just kind of talk about what, what's happening so far, as we've been trying to, reaching out to these, and it's really three. to, reaching out to these, and it's really three pockets of three kind of standout projects. We've reached out to them, two of the three pockets we've actually met with, and I would say generally, they're, they're very excited about it. Clearly, they're very low properties, they are being inundated with floodwater, so they're on board and generally supportive. We have not gotten, it clearly hasn't been designed, that's what you all are kind of going to consider tonight, but in our discussions, you know, we have said a cost-effective way of getting the same protection is a, an earth berm. Earth berm is inexpensive, it's something that the majority of this project is based on, and it's cost-effective. From what I can tell, the owners that we've talked to, with the, maybe an exception of one, would be willing to have the earth berm continue across the back of their property and kind of create this understanding of, we'll do the berm, you know, and we'll get water past the berm. You would have to work on your property to beautify it, kind of make it, make it as you would like. Generally, the owners have been receptive to that. We've had, we've had one question of, well, you know, if you're going to pay for the berm, I would prefer to have a wall, could you all allocate the same funding that you would have to the berm to my wall improvement? So, there's going to, you know, it's going to be very much a case-by-case solution for each property owner, what they want on their property, but we're, we're trying to work through that. A goal would be to have all of that kind of orchestrated and finalized in a solution for each of them when we did, when we got to that part of the project. But as we've talked about, there will definitely be a Phase One that begins in March. That's, you know, we're not ready to, for our phase to begin. Ideally, the second phase, which we think could happen in about a year from now, so the following winter, we would hope to have a solution in place for each of those three pockets. That's kind of the goal. Don't know that we'll get there, but we're, we're looking, I mean, it's looking positive so far with the discussions we've had.
But you're working on it now?
Yes.
Yes, thank you.
Yes.
But if we, if we don't do the seven-foot plan tomorrow, then we won't have the opportunity to do that pretty much ever again. I mean, in the same way.
Probably not, you know, we would, we'd lose opportunity to work with the golf courses. The, one of the, one of the reasons of going onto the golf course with the 7.0 plan is because we can't do the same type of project in the right-of-way, in the, on, in the city's pathway, because what it is, is you, like, some of those, like, driveways are at elevation four and a half, five, and then you got a seven-foot berm sidewalk, you've got to get up off the road, up and over that sidewalk, and down into those properties, and nobody's going to, nobody's going to agree to that, so that pretty much goes away. So, you kind of lose that ability. That's why we, when we first did the research, we said, well, we think you could get six because we could bring up the driveways a little bit, but we couldn't bring them up like 18 inches. We could bring them up six inches, but some of them would have to come up 18 or 24 inches, which is just too severe.
Yeah.
And so, you lose that opportunity to generally go to seven, is the thought.
And the cost that we're seeing in here, where it says, what does it say, step wall? That's what, Douglas, that's what you're saying, would be decreased if we went with the berm? So, the, it would be, it would be less than the money, than the dollars that we're seeing on this chart.
That's right.
That's true.
Yeah, I think for, for planning, and we've had, you know, obviously, again, it's not designed, we have, we've kind of had the idea of sheet piles walls, street pile walls, which is very expensive. I think for financial planning, we should probably just budget a berm in those private areas and just have it as a kind of placeholder that if they're agreeable to it, the city would do it. If they're agreeable to some kind of, you know, they, they make the improvement themselves and, you know, we reimburse a portion, that could be a solution, but some, there should probably be some placeholder in there, and I think the cost of a berm for those properties would be a reasonable placeholder.
Rick?
Thank you, sir.
Yes, sir. All right, thank you.
Next item's old business, there are none. New item, new business. First item is what we were just discussing, approval of change order to Thomason Hutton Design and Engineering Contract in the Amount of $67,000 for Additional Design Services to Increase Level of Protection of Waterway Boulevard Multi-Use Path Elevation Project from Six Feet to Seven Feet. There a motion?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Any additional discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. Rick, thank you very much, again, as always, for y'all's help.
Go forward, get this on the ground.
Yeah, this is, stars are aligning, it's a huge win. Long time coming.
Just to manage expectations, they will...
No.
It's sold.
Pan in the balloon, right here.
I mean, just managing. So, this project needs to be completed in terms of the design, that's what you're approving today, then they'll be able to submit for permits to, there's some areas there that are, that are, we would be working under the critical area, so we require a state and federal permit for that. The timeline that we've been given is between 12 and 18 months, so completion of the project won't happen soon, but the beginning of the work with Wild Dunes would start next year.
Thank you, Desiree.
You're welcome. Keeping everybody home.
Next item, approval of recommendation from the ATAX Committee to Award Grant of $35,000 of State ATAX Funds to the Wild Dunes Author Event with Mary Alice Monroe, part of the Wild Dunes Literary Series.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Further questions, comments?
I have one.
Jim?
I attended the event last year, one of the events that Mary Alice Monroe sponsored last year, and it was a wonderful event, well-attended, and it is, it brings a lot of people to Wild Dunes, so I totally support that we continue to fund this with our ATAX funds.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. Next item, approval of award of a contract in the Amount of $261,337.50 to the Beach Construction Company for Construction of Two Boardwalks at 26A and 36A Beach Access Pass. You'll see the funding mechanism is the Charleston County Green Belt Program that they are meeting mid-month, in November, so I think at our next council meeting, well, I think it's the same night, actually. We may not know it that night, but the anticipation is approval. It's gone through multiple committees at Charleston County, and hopefully that will get an approval. Is there a motion?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Desiree, any other comments on this one?
No, we're excited. As soon as we get the green light from Charleston County, we'll be ready to execute a contract and hopefully get these folks on board to start construction and complete it before the next season. Under construction, you all know, we have two ADA compliant boardwalks currently being constructed at 46 and 52nd, so we're excited about four new improved beach access paths being ready next, next spring. I did mention to the mayor, we have about $200,000 left from FY24 state budget allocation for boardwalks. My plan is to present some options for the Public Services and Facilities Committee meeting next month to maybe identify a fifth one that could be improved before next season, hopefully, and utilize all the funding that we've received specifically to improve beach access paths.
And not, and not an ADA, but a, just a path.
We have a, yes, we have a list of those beach access paths that continuously flood during, during rain and hold a lot of standing water, and we'll be discussing those and prioritizing and maybe identifying one or two that could be, that could be constructed and improved.
Just, so, you know, I've got numerous complaints about 23rd Avenue, it's like a swamp.
I got that on the list, John.
Is this the same concrete, or is this going to be all EPE wood, whatever?
EPE, yes, ma'am.
So, not the concrete?
No.
Nicole, keep me honest, did we vote on that one?
Not yet.
No.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. Next item, approval of a contract to Alder Energy Systems in the Amount of $66,565 for the Public Works Solar Rooftop Project. You can see it's funded by a, fully funded by a grant from South Carolina Energy Efficiency and Conservation Block Grant.
Motion to approve.
This is coming from our Environmental Advisory Committee as an initiative, and... Yes, sir, go ahead, John.
Just, I saw the, and I asked the question last time, but on the, on the economics around the project, I appreciate you doing that. A couple of comments that I guess I, that I get away from that is that it doesn't, it looks like it's a break-even project over 60 years, I mean, 30 years, excuse me, which is not great economics. I don't know if we'd want to fund something like that on our own, so I would, and it also looks like an inverter at today's cost versus 25-year cost, then include maintenance and things like that that may come up on them, so I would encourage us to keep track of the actual savings, because at some point, I'm sure, we're going to be asked to fund a project on our own like this, and I think it'd be very helpful for us to have the economics and the payback on this thing in actual dollars as opposed to some projection. So, if we could keep track of that, I think it'd be very helpful for us to make a decision next time we're funding it.
That's a good point. Are there questions, comments?
I'm a little confused. I thought that the project is fully funded, so the only, only cost we'll have is replacing items as they, as they need to be replaced at 10 or 20-year intervals?
Correct. I think what Council Member Pogosian was indicating is the Environmental Advisory Committee has challenged the city to identify projects to enhance our resiliency and maybe looking at alternate sources of, of energy and solar power panels, solar panels is one, and I, and in the event that there is a, another initiative for the city to install solar panels in another city facility, that, at that point, unless we receive a grant for that in the future, it would be a cost to the city, and I think it's just wanting to understand the cost savings of a project like that to evaluate when, when that decision point is...
When there's not a grant.
Okay, so this is a win-win situation for us right now.
For, for this one, yes.
Okay, thank you.
Motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Thank you. Next item, approval of a sole-source contract to Asphalt Concepts in the Amount of $43,126 to refurbish seven crosswalks on Palm Boulevard between 21st and 41st Avenue, and you can see the funding spot there. Is there a motion?
Motion to approve.
Blair?
Thank you, Mayor. Have we looked at, instead of refurbishing crosswalks, moving the crosswalks so they line up with the beach access points? But right now, the crosswalks don't line up with the beach access points, and so it just creates more confusion.
So, we have looked at that in the past and made a request for DOT to look at when they develop some concepts for Palm Boulevard. Of the seven, I believe, five already line up with their beach access paths, so not all of them, some of them do, do line up. We can certainly look at that again. I think that the challenge at the time, if I remember correctly, is the distance between each crosswalk would not meet by changing, maybe changing some of them would not meet SEDOT standards, but we can certainly make the request again, but I know we've looked into that before, and that, that was the challenge, and knowing that there's only one or two, if I recall correctly, that do not line up currently with a, with a beach access path.
Okay, good. I was going to say...
It seems it makes sense to line them up, instead of dumping people and parked cars.
Let me talk traffic ease for a minute. I think the DOT looks at it, crosswalks are usually at intersections, traffic intersections, and so that's where they have put them now. You might have to enlighten them that there's a beach access path that causes pedestrian traffic that they may want to consider as well. It might help them get beyond that, always putting them right at the intersection. You can't have a mid-block crosswalk, it is allowable, but it does need to be spaced properly.
Desiree, I know this was in our package, so this is essentially freshening what's there from paint.
Yes, sir. They haven't been maintained in a long time, and we'd like to get that done this winter ahead of the next season.
Okay. And I have, I have one question about the durable plastic markings that they're going to put on the road. You might want to ask them to make sure that they do, they will last, that they're not going to be, need to be replaced too often. And I think that was it. I think it's a great idea, and it probably will slow traffic on Palm Boulevard, at least when there are pedestrians out there.
Got a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Next item is approval of fiscal '26 state budget request. You recall last council meeting, or maybe even the one before, we passed a resolution given our lobbyist direction for policy initiatives. Seems kind of obvious that our funding request would go along with that, and just refresher memory, those categories were beach renourishment, state ATAX flexibility, so not really a funding request, that's more of a policy change at a state level, stormwater infrastructure, and expansion of sewer infrastructure. Just a quick note, we do this every year, looking, looking for some type of an earmark coming from our state representatives. I've heard from MASC, our lobbyist, it's going to be a very different budget year without any stimulus money flying around and with, with the Helene efforts of recovery. So, I think we need to be very targeted in our request on what we're looking for this year with the amounts that are going to be reasonable, and again, that's where we lean on our lobbyists to tell us what, you know, looks like it's going to get approval or passed, you know, we're not going to go in and ask for a $10 or $20 million number when we know that's going to be immediately turned down, so, you know, again, I would leave it up to our lobbyists and staff, happy to have conversations tonight, but let's get a motion on the floor, and then we'll, well, let's have a conversation before we even know what we're motioning at this point. So, and Scott, I know you had asked for additional comments or detail to be put in on this item, and this is kind of where we are at this point, looking at, looking at a funding request.
I think, I think that's helpful, and I, you know, I don't want to bog down the meeting for tonight, I think directionally, we got the categories, and maybe what we can do is work with the lobbyists to try to target some numbers as we go along through the year.
Other comments or thoughts?
I would just add, Mayor, I know that beach access improvements are not included in the resolution that council adopted last month as a policy priority, but it is an item that usually gets really good reception at the state, state level, just because they're public beach access paths. The city has been spending money from its beach preservation fee fund on maintaining, enhancing, and adding boardwalks, so that would be an expense that would not be on the city, so I would recommend that we continue to ask for those funds every year. If we get enough to do one boardwalk, one improvement, I think would be very beneficial, so just a suggestion.
Yeah, and again, this would be, not be an ADA, because I think we're pretty covered on the island, spread out wise, this would just be foot bridges and/or walkways.
Would this be an appropriate place to ask for road improvements, DOT venue, or is that a different venue?
Different, different bucket.
I would say that that, that is something the city should work on directly with SEDOT, with the allocation that they receive from the state on any specific road improvement projects.
Thank you.
So, I think, Desiree, would this be a motion to look at funding requests for the three items, that would have a funding request and additionally for beach access pass?
Correct.
Motion to approve is stated.
Second.
Other questions or comments or...
Just the understanding that staff will work with our lobbyist to identify funding, funding amounts for, for the request.
And I think our lobbyist had asked for, we have to fill out a detailed sheet, kind of defining each prog, project and amount, so I think they had asked for that by the end of the year, maybe if I remember right. We've got a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. Next item, Boards and Commissions Report. Board of Zoning Appeals, no meeting in October, actually met today, I guess, those minutes will be. Nicole, you don't have those ready yet? Planning Commission, no meeting in October. Accommodations Tax Advisory Committee, minutes are attached. Environmental Advisory Committee, minutes are attached. Ordances, Resolutions, and Petitions, no second readings, no first readings. Resolutions and Proclamations, Resolution 2024-11, a resolution to adopt Clyde, North Carolina, to support following the destruction caused by Hurricane Helene.
Motion to approve the resolution.
Is there a reading?
There's a reading.
Thank you.
But I would like you to give an update about your conversations with the people in Clyde.
I will. So, just by way of reminder, Clyde was picked, if you recall, our T-shirt. I will. So, just by way of reminder, Clyde was picked, if you recall, our T-shirt contest winner was actually from Clyde, North Carolina, so it seemed like a good tie-in to, to let that be our sister city. So, I've had a couple of conversations with the mayor, some email exchange with their town administrator. Very, very appreciative of what we're offering, even though we're not even offering anything yet, other than support, but just very, very humble and very appreciative of what we're willing to do. The mayor said this county has been coordinating efforts on behalf of the entire county, so there's some, not overlap, nobody stepping on each other. Desiree talked to that county yesterday or today, today, I guess it was, yesterday, and I think all immediate needs are met at this point, so I think we will just continue conversations with their administration to make sure we're doing what we can for them on an ongoing basis. And I told them, you know, it's to be determined, you know, what support might look like. Could be at a council level, could be at a mayor level, staff level, so I think more to come around that.
They've got a long cold winter ahead. There are immediate needs are being met, but the reason for the resolution was to look to the future.
Right. Because, I think, Jimmy, you made this comment at our workshop, our last meeting, you know, folks are going to go away, there'll be a new headline chasing at some point, and we can, you know, it's what, about offering support just this week or this month, we'll, we'll stay in touch. Desiree, anything else? Do you want anything?
No.
Okay. Got a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. No need for executive session. One quick item on miscellaneous, even though Susan completely stole my thunder, but that's okay, it's all good. You know, in, in your career, every now and then, you come across people that you'd love to work with for your entire career. Sometimes that works, sometimes it doesn't. I've worked with a whole lot of people in my career, you know, some were superstars, and others were, were not so much. You know, in our form of government, our city administrators, what sits at the top of the food chain, and the organizational staff, and leads our, leads our staff, it's up to us as elected officials to set policies, and then staff's responsible for implementing them. I've obviously not served on another city council or mayor anywhere, but I do talk to a lot of mayors and city councils across the state, and I feel very confident in saying we have one of the best city administrators and staffs around, which I'm really sad to announce the resignation of Desiree. Desiree's been with IOP for 10 years, in her current role for a little over six. Desiree's advice and guidance for me as a council member, and now as mayor, has been invaluable, helping me understand the workings of the city, all the nuances of the stakeholders involved on a multitude of issues. I had a, and we all have had a steep learning curve, being newly elected officials, and Desiree was always available, willing to discuss items, issues, positives, negatives. Rarely has a situation come up that we haven't had. Desiree hasn't had a quick word of advice for me, or to discuss solutions to get to an optimal spot, or most likely explain something for the 17th time. But I usually apologize upfront for that, it's all good. Desiree will be joining the Municipal Association of South Carolina as a field service representative, providing support and to staff and councils all over the state. She'll be with us through the end of the year, but we'll start, John and I've already had some conversations, as John is chair of the Administration Committee of filling this big, huge hole as fast as we possibly can. But Desiree, no, you are leaving a big hole for me personally, our elected officials, our staff, our residents of IOP, and you will be hard to replace. Your contributions to this community have been exemplary, and we couldn't have asked for a better leader, so, one, thank you, and best of luck in your new career. And I would have lost serious money to say I could have gotten through that tonight. Being no further business.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
All those in favor?